Welcome to the Sandusky City Commission. Before our Pledge of Allegiance, we will have an invocation of great inspiration offered by Commissioner Pajali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord, thank you for another day of life, and thank you for bringing us all together in harmony to conduct the people's business. Please watch over and guide us in all of our decision-making this evening. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Myers, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brady, Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Meinter.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Missus, would someone care to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Brady?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. And the bad news is further continues, Mr. Brady can't be here. You're stuck with me again tonight, but I'm happy to be with you here, chairing the meeting. Commissioners, we have the minutes of our meeting of August 8, 2022. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 8 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any of our agenda items tonight, please step to the microphone, share with us your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear your comments, and if there are questions, we will endeavor to answer those as the meeting unfolds. Seeing no one moving towards the microphone, we will move to proclamation, and the proclamation pertains to Alzheimer's Month, and I understand that Ms. Erica Parnasari is here to accept that, and I also note that my all-time favorite commissioner is in the audience today. Welcome back to the chambers, Commissioner Twine. It's very delightful to see you. Sorry, the rest of you just don't quite make the catch.
That's okay.
So Commissioner Blair is going to make the presentation.
All right.
Harris, I'm sorry. Commissioner Harris.
Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain and the most common form of dementia that affects not only a person's memory, but also their judgment and reasoning abilities. And over 220,000 Ohio citizens are currently living with Alzheimer's or another dementia, and it affects more than 6 million Americans. And whereas Ohio is projected to see a 13.6% increase in cases by 2025, and whereas another 421,000 Ohioans are unpaid caregivers, and half of those living with the disease have yet to be diagnosed, and caregiving for individuals with Alzheimer's disease often takes an enormous toll on family members. Caregivers themselves often suffer more stress, depression, and health problems than caregivers of people with other illnesses. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging, it is a progressive brain disease without any way to prevent or slow its progression, and is fatal. And whereas we recognize the significant role of Alzheimer's Association, Northwest Ohio Chapter plays in offering diverse educational and supportive programming and services, caregiver support groups, professional training, respite care, and financial assistance to ease the burden to families and caregivers while educating the community and increasing awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia by early detection and diagnosis, advocacy, and research. And whereas to call attention to this disease that affects so many of our families, Saturday, September 10th, is the Day of Erie Shore Walk to End Alzheimer's 2022 Sandusky, a walk that has been ongoing since the 1990s and has raised over $240,000. And Thursday, September 1st, is Wear Purple Day. In support of our efforts, now therefore, I, Blake Harris, on behalf of Richard Brady, President of the Commission, City of Sandusky, do hereby proclaim recognition of September 22 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Sandusky, and I urge all residents and merchants to paint the town purple during September 1st through September 12, 2022, by decorating homes and businesses with purple ribbons, purple lights, and Alzheimer Walk banners, dated this 22nd day of August 22.
Ms. Parnasari, I'm a little bit rusty, and I should have invited you up to the podium to accept the proclamation. If you'd like to come up, we'd be pleased to have you. If there's anything you'd like to add and bring any of your colleagues up, you're all quite welcome.
They're volunteers on my Walk Committee.
And you're welcome to address the folks back home or us gathered here if there's anything you'd like to add.
Well, I would just like to thank you very much for bringing attention to this disease, and I appreciate all the efforts of the Sandusky community to help put on the Walk. We have a wonderful volunteer Walk Committee that meets monthly for about nine months out of the year to plan the Walk. Takes a lot of things to, it takes a lot of effort to put that on, so I appreciate the opportunity to bring awareness and make this public for everybody.
Well, we appreciate your work and the dedication and bringing this to people's attention. It's important. There are, it's a complicated disease, and it's a scourge, but thank you for doing what you do to help people and put on this Walk. So thank you. Thanks for being here. Now, you're, you of course, as Commissioner Twine knows, you're free to leave, but you probably will want to stay for this next presentation because it is scintillating. Mr. Klein is going to talk to us about changes in the floodplain regulations. We really are looking forward to that.
Here's got this.
Ever since I received the agenda on Thursday, I've been, I've been hanging at the edge waiting for this presentation, Mr. Klein.
Well, I'll apologize to start that I don't have 15 to 20 minutes of material. So what happened here is back in 2020, we got the regulations, and we tried to get ahead of the curve. We tried to get everything approved. Got approved last year in 2021, and earlier this year, we were notified that the items in there, that we tried to maintain flexibility. We tried to mimic the terminology from previous years, things like that, that FEMA didn't like that we were doing those things. So they asked us to go back and update some of the terminology and things like that. So this is, there's really nothing significant to the, to what was approved back in 2021. We're not updating, you know, the flood zones, those haven't changed. The same thing that was approved before, we just have to do this. If we don't get this approved by September 1st, then Sandusky gets kicked out of the NFIP program until we can get the regulation to exactly how FEMA wants to see it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. It did remind me of one of those pain in the neck lawyers who edits things just for the sake of editing things because there weren't any substantive changes. But Commissioner Pajali, you had a great set of questions that went back and forth with Mr. Klein. I don't know if you'd like to bring any of that to light, if you'd like me to summarize that. I thought those were important questions, though.
I would defer to you to summarize. The only question I had was what happens if we don't approve it, and he answered that at this point in time.
Yeah, we can't participate in the program, and of course, homeowners aren't required to have this, but if you don't, if you're in the floodplain and you don't have the floodplain insurance, or the flood insurance, I should say, then you may very well find yourself with both an uninsured loss and the inability to obtain financing. Even if you paid for your home, if you want a home equity line, you can't get it because the banks aren't going to assist on that, because the Federal Reserve's going to assist up on that, so all very important. Other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think the main part of this is that, I know we went back and forth about that free board or two-foot, but the main focus of this is for the residents that do have mortgages, note on their house, they will be required to have flood insurance, and this sets a standard price. They don't have to shop around and be at risk of paying more in flood insurance. I mean, I'm not a big fan of flood insurance because a lot of it doesn't cover anything. With Sandusky, you've got to be in a tidal flow or a moving river or something to even have it pay for anything for your home, but if you have a mortgage on your home, you'll be required to get it, and this keeps your rates down.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
I think Mr. Murray alluded to the fact that so many times, what determines whether or not you need the flood insurance is the banks. The banks call the shots, so even if, even if you can get a letter map adjustment to get out of the floodplain, sometimes the banks will still require that flood insurance.
Anything further? It's a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the subject? If not, then I'll declare this hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, we have a lot of, a lot of communications we've received from staff. Would anyone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have a number of routine items on the consent agenda tonight, but are there any of those that you'd like to remove and place on the regular agenda to highlight particular matters or pose questions? If not, then Ms. Myers, would you go ahead and present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item A, establish One Ohio Opioid Sediment Fund. Item B, subrecipient agreement for OGO Be Well Program. Item C, Erie County Board of Health MOU for 506 East Monroe Street Demo. Item D, OPWC application for Superior Street Rehab. Item E, Chapter 1157 Codified Ordinance Update to Flood Pain Damage Reduction. Item F, amend ODOT Ordinance 22-103 to Correct Scrivener's Error. Item G, Temporary Easement with MHD Corporation for Sandusky Bay Pathway. Item H, Agreement for STS with New Story Schools. Item I, Approving Tax Incentive Review Council Recommendations.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I move for adoption of the consent agenda items A through I, whether they be a resolution or ordinance, in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Myers, would you, first poll the Commissioners on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. Those resolutions and ordinances are adopted. Ms. Myers, would you present item one, please?
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lake Erie Shores and Islands relating to the replacement of an Anara Deck Chair at the Jackson Street Pier and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Myers, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Ms. Myers, would you present item number two, please?
It is requested an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of 5,135,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of, one, revitalizing the bayfront urban revitalization area by acquiring, clearing, and improving certain properties in that area, undertaking the environmental cleanup and remediation of certain properties in that area; two, paying for the costs of various improvements for the landing as more further described and approved in ordinance number 18-127; three, paying costs associated with the relocation of City Hall, including but not limited to those projects approved by ordinance number 18-119, 18-128, and 18-129, and resolution number 02518R; four, paying costs of various improvements to Jackson Street Pier; and five, paying costs of the construction of and various improvements to the Sandusky Bay Pathway, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Colleagues, this one's a little different, and we first need to pass a motion to approve the fiscal officer's certificate, so I wonder if someone would care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and the fiscal officer's certificate is approved. And now with respect to the legislation itself, the ordinance, would someone care to make a motion with respect to that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. And perhaps we should lead off with Ms. Reader, and you can give us a summary, if you would please, of what we're accomplishing tonight.
Absolutely, through you, Chairman, to the rest of the Commissioners. So what you have before you is legislation on our various purpose notes, which has been typically a one-year note that we have been doing. Last year, in 2021, we issued notes for $7,290,000. Those notes are set to mature at the end of September. It's September 30th of 2022. So at this time, we're looking to pay down $2,155,000 of that note and issue new notes for 2022. That leaves a balance of $5,135,000 that will be issued for the new notes. This legislation just authorized us to advertise and receive bids for those notes. As a point of reference, last year, the net interest cost on the notes was only 0.265%, so really good interest rates last year. We're hoping we still are competitive this year.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Questions, Commissioners, or comments? I mean, Ms. Reader, sorry. Ms. Reader, I do have one question. I think I know the answer to it, but as opposed to, and we're going to go out to market this year, and we probably will pay some higher rates, that's just where the market is right now in short-term rates, would we give consideration, at what point would we give consideration to going out and have longer, more permanent financing to take out these short-term notes?
So on some of the larger projects, we look to do that. On this current note, we do have some items that may be tied to a larger project, like the landing design. When we go out and do the actual project for the landing, we could tie this debt to the long-term debt if we so desire, or we can continue to pay down on an annual basis. So we have that option.
I think the answer, if I'm guessing at the answer, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, but I think the answer, why we wouldn't do that now for $5 million worth of debt is that the transaction costs are just too significant to warrant that, and it's better to just stay short-term, and cheaper to stay short-term.
Absolutely. There's an extreme cost to bonding out long-term debt, the annual various purpose notes are a lot more cost-effective.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Smith Paving and Excavating Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant, East Water Street Public Parking Lot Improvement Project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I move for the adoption of this resolution and declare it takes immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, is there anything that you'd like to address? It's a little different for us to award one contract for materials and one contract for the work itself. I think that's how this is being broken up, but maybe I have that wrong.
Yeah, through the chair, what we've done in the past is that in the last five or six years, we have, when we're doing asphalt in-house, we buy the materials, and we compare all the prices. We get the prices from everybody local that we can possibly buy asphalt from. This year, because prices were so volatile all year, we didn't do that one large contract like we typically would do. So for the repairs that we're doing out in the streets, for the water main breaks and those types of things, we have been buying it as needed rather than coming to you guys and requesting a few hundred thousand dollars. So what we did here was, we weren't sure if this was even going to go. This was the third time we actually bid the concrete piece, which is the three drive aprons that will be going into the parking lot. We bid it for the third time, finally got an award, and we said, well, let's just lock in those asphalt prices now as well. So we did choose the lowest asphalt contractor that we had as well, which is what we've always done in the past. And so the first contract that would be voted on tonight is for Smith Paving and Excavating, which is the concrete work for the drive aprons. The second contract would be for the asphalt associated with city crews actually paving and striping the parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, for clarifying that. I didn't have that quite right. Commissioners, questions or comments? Ms. Myers, would you please poll the Commissioners on the motion with respect to the first of the two ordinances?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. And now on the ordinance itself.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. And now on the ordinance itself.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. The first ordinance is adopted. Would you please poll the Commissioners on the motion with respect to item three?
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to Erie Materials Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for asphalt and paving materials for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant, East Water Street Public Parking Lot Improvement Project, and declaring that this shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, would you, I'm sorry, Commissioners, any separate questions on item number two? If not, then Ms. Myers, would you please poll the Commissioners on the motion with respect to ordinance two under item three?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Would you present item number four, please, Ms. Myers?
Yes. It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work performed by Gunlock Sheet Metal Works Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Justice Center Roo Top Air Handling Unit Project in the amount of $13,425, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Meinter.
I do have a question. I'm sure it's going to be to Mr. Klein, but going back to spring, I think we voted for, got some RFPs or sealed bids in, and the engineers' projections were about $70,000. And at that time, when the document said engineer, was that you or your off-staff or was that a third-party engineer?
Yeah, through the chair, that was actually from the engineer with Bowen, who was the architect for the Justice Center. They prepared that estimate of around $70,000.
Okay, and then game, they came out accurately. However, Bowen did not engineer properly based on the square footages of space, correct?
Well, through the chair, I wouldn't necessarily say that they didn't engineer properly, it was that the design of the Justice Center was progressing at the same time that we were buying this unit, and as they were going through the design, they realized that it would be better, one, to upgrade this unit rather than buy another fourth unit to put on the roof, and there would be some cost savings on the actual construction of the Justice Center. And second, there is this new green speed intelligence with digital condenser fan controls that they, after we bid the project, the manufacturer said, well, we're selling it only with this, you can't buy it without it, and here's the upcharge, and here's what you're paying, because that isn't going to be in compliance with 2023 Department of Energy requirements. So there were some changes that happened after we originally bid the project that were out of our control. The other ones were things that the architect decided would be more cost-effective in the long term with both projects combined.
I just ask because, I mean, when you're trying to build something, I know it's difficult to project, but we're going to get into a pretty significant project as we move forward, and if we have these type of change orders on every item, we're going to be way, way over budget. That's a pretty big one, so I just hope we keep a pretty good lid on this. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Myers, would you please poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please, Ms. Myers.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of an aluminum custom-built traffic sign truck body from Khalida Truck Equipment Incorporated of Wall Ridge, Ohio, for the Streets and Traffic Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I move for adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Myers, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please, Ms. Myers.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of an aluminum custom-built traffic sign truck body from Khalida Truck Equipment Incorporated of Wall Ridge, Ohio, for the Streets and Traffic
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second?
It's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Myers, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Myers, would you present our sixth and final piece of legislation for the evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation for the demolition of a structure located at 1,002 West Jefferson Street, Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
So given that this is for the demolition of the Doghouse Bar, let's have a race to see who can be the fastest to-
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Meinter?
I won. I move for the adoption of this ordinance and take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second?
Very good, Mr. Meinter. Is there someone who wishes to present on this item? Mr. Webster, or somebody have a summary of what we're doing here? Mr. Waddington?
Are we going to do, going to have us a discussion?
Of course. We'll start with that. Why don't we start with that?
Do what?
Well, we'll start with discussion.
Okay. I'd like to thank the chief. I know I relayed, and the city manager, Webster, how many letters that I got. I went out there, walked the neighborhoods, and I think you guys did a great job, and then our staff working on this. I think this was way, long, long overdue, and when it gets raised, I want to know the day so I can be over there.
It was definitely a team effort, city staff and everybody, prosecutor's office, director. Couldn't have done it without everybody. So, thank you.
Great. You're right, Mr. Waddington. It was a long saga, and the persistence of all the parties involved, and you, Chief, in particular, are what caused us to come about. So it is so frustrating for residents to have to deal with these things because the law allows us to move with only a certain amount of speed. Due process requires that so that we don't abruptly take action and take people's property rights, but sometimes we wish we could move a little faster. I think in this instance, the city moved just as quickly as it could, and I do appreciate your bringing that out, Mr. Waddington, that there was a lot of different people who participated in making that happen. Additional questions or comments on the legislation?
Mr. Murray? Mr. John?
Mr. Waddington?
A few times that I went over there, I think it was Charles, I can't think of his last name now, that I brought letters down here. I thought I won the lottery. I had neighbors coming out, you know, to kind of not blow me up, but when's it coming down? I said, we're working as fast as we can, you know? Some things take a little time. So I'm just glad it's done. But this one-
It's resolved.
Additional questions or comments? Well, I don't think we need a presentation. Ms. Myers, would you please poll the commissioners on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, and that ordinance is adopted, and the Doghouse Bar goes down. We turn now to the city manager, Mr. Webster, for your report tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with a donation. A donation of $100 was received from Dennis and Teresa Wilfong for the Sandusky Police Department to ask for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. With our thanks.
Moving on to administration, the city was informed by the offices of Senator Brown and Representative Capter last week that the U.S. Department of Transportation Secretary Buttigieg will be visiting Sandusky the afternoon of Thursday, August 25th, to hold a press conference highlighting the 24.5 million raise grant that was recently awarded to the Route 6 Connectivity Project in the Sandusky Bay Pathway. We'll have more information to follow, but there's many, many years of hard work in the Public Works Department, Planning Department, et cetera, as well as a great partnership with the other local communities in the county that made that grant possible, and we're very excited to welcome, you know, a cabinet member of the administration to downtown on Thursday to accept that award. Also, the city is excited to announce it has executed a settlement agreement with Erie County. This settlement ends the pending litigation between the city and the county regarding outstanding sewer bills owed to the city. City Commission approved the settlement agreement at our last meeting. Additionally, the city and Erie County have agreed to enter into negotiations regarding the future of sewer services provided to the county. On behalf of the city of Sandusky, we want to thank Erie County for their willingness to put this dispute behind us and move forward to create a public, a productive relationship for the continued provision of sewer services. Moving on to the police, the Office of Criminal Justice Services has announced that grant funding for body worn cameras is available through an application process. Applications for this grant will be accepted until September 8th, asking for a motion or approval to allow the department to apply for this grant.
So moved.
Second?
It's been a motion and second discussion. Ms. Myers, would you please poll the commissioners on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, that motion is passed.
For fire, on August 6th, the American Red Cross and Sandusky Fire partnered together to install smoke detectors in one of Sandusky's neighborhoods. 106 smoke detectors were installed in 60 homes, free of charge, in the neighborhood bordered by Scott Street, Sycamore Line, East Monroe, and Columbus. A big thank you to Laura Taylor and all of the volunteers from the local chapter of the Red Cross for coordinating this program and helping so many Sandusky residents improve the safety of their home. I'd also like to thank Chief D'Amico and his team for doing all that hard work. And then finally, for public works, mark your calendars. Citywide cleanup drop-off day has been scheduled for Saturday, September 24th, and yard waste drop-off days are scheduled for Saturday, October 8th, and Sunday, October 9th. We will share further details as the event date dates draw near. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? Hearing none. I want to say one thing, Mr. Webster, with respect to the Route 6 grant, a prize grant, I guess we call it. That is a testament to a lot of people who have worked very hard for a very long time to develop a plan, number one, and we've invested significantly into the development of that plan in our portion of it, particularly the Sandusky Bay Pathway and the landing project. But it is also a testament to the wisdom of long-term planning, because had that opportunity come along, and had we not had a plan in hand, and you never know how these things are going to get funded, but if we didn't have the plan in hand, when the opportunity became available, we wouldn't have been able to take advantage of it. And I ask the public listening, who rightfully says, they ask, they want to know, why are we spending their money on things that might happen in the future? And I think that the answer is right here. It's where opportunity meets the plan, and it gets funded, because without the plan, it never would have happened. And so I'm grateful for everyone who participated in bringing us there. And the other thing that I want to highlight with this, with the receipt of this grant, is the importance of collaboration with our partners in the county, in Huron, in the townships. If we didn't have all of that, if we were where we were some years ago, where, Mr. Waddington, we used to call Perkins Avenue the DMZ line, that probably is getting a little dated reference to the Korean War, but the, you know, back then, we wouldn't have been able to cooperate and have this come about.